Have a second? Okay, we are now back in public session. Everyone should take a moment to mute their cell phones. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on the CUNY Board of Trustees website at www.cuny.edu/livestream. On December 9th, 2024, the Board of Trustees convened the budget and public hearing regarding CUNY-wide issues and/or the items on the calendar agenda for the December 16th, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting. Fourteen people registered to testify and seven people presented testimony in person. One person submitted written testimony, which is attached. Speakers included a student representing the CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities, an adjunct professor, and several students from the law school. Testimony included a call for continued support with the city and state legislators to increase funding for students with accessibility needs and for the creation of a separate line item in the budget for ADA compliance needs. Speakers called for greater protections for students supporting Palestine, including support for free speech and protection from felony charges, and a call for the CUNY administration to participate in BDS. Several speakers took issue with CUNY's security contracts with Strategic Security Corporation. Students called for resources to stock food pantries on campuses, stating some pantries have been empty for as long as nine months, and a GoFundMe page was created to secure funding. Students also highlighted issues with mold outbreaks and the need for remediation on several campuses. As always, the testimony has been shared with the board and the chancellor, as well as posted to the trustees' website. Trustees have been very busy. Currently, the university is searching for three presidents. I'd like to thank all the trustees who are chairing and serving on those search committees for their time and energy to one of the most important tasks we have as trustees. The work on these searches is moving along, and the full board looks forward to the next steps of appointing three new presidents. Trustees will also be participating on two central office searches, including the search for a new executive vice chancellor and university provost, as well as for vice chancellor for university advancement. Last month, trustee Arvinides represented the university at the Association of Community College Leadership Congress. Trustee Palacio attended the new faculty reception, and last week, trustee Sunshine represented the board at the Newmark School of Journalism commencement. I'd also like to congratulate trustee Linares Garcia for her recent recognition by city and state on their responsible 100 list. Chancellor, you are up next.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, trustees, presidents, and vice chancellors. I'm happy to see us gathered today for the last meeting of 2024. I have several exciting updates, so I will jump right into it. First, I want to echo the congratulatory words from Chair Thompson, but I also want to officially welcome Danny Redden, who is our first board meeting, I think, as a trustee.
Yes.
And so...
He is already contributing to the board.
And is the 38th chairperson of the Student University Senate. Unlike many of our students, he's a first-generation college student, born and raised in Brownsville, Brooklyn, and to Nigerian immigrant parents. He came to CUNY because his parents strongly believed that education could be an engine to social and economic mobility, and we are glad that his search led him to us, and we look forward to working with you in your new role. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Many of you were in the audience at City Tech last month when I delivered the State of the University address. I thank you for being there, and to our board chair for his remarks at that event. It was an opportunity to amplify the good work all of us do on a regular basis and the successes that too often go unseen. I was delighted to announce the elevation of our CUNY School of Medicine as an independent institution, strengthening its role in helping address the national shortage of doctors, especially from underrepresented groups. We are proud that our medical school, nearly 70% of the entire class identifies as either Black or Latino, more than triple the percentage at medical schools nationally. I also spoke about CUNY's growth in enrollment for a second consecutive year, which totals almost 15,000 students over the past two academic years. This year's jump of 3% was driven by a 6% increase at our community colleges, which were hit hardest by pandemic-induced declines. We also recorded a 4% increase in the enrollment of new graduate students, the first such growth in four years. And during our free application period, which ran from October 21st to November 15th, we received over 55,000 freshman applications. That is up 62% from our inaugural fee waiver last fall, and I'm looking forward to welcoming some of those, many of those applicants to our campuses next fall. The last year has been challenging in some ways, but it is so key to celebrate these successes and remember that when we stay focused on our mission and work together, we will always accomplish great things on behalf of our students and the city. It is a time of the year, FAFSA and TAP applications are open, and at CUNY, we are counting, continuing our work, helping students get the financial aid they need to fulfill their goals. This year, to support students in completing FAFSA, TAP, and the New York State Dream Applications, we train more than 200 campus staff, CBO partners, and peer mentors, and hire 70 peer mentors through federal work-study and private funds as CUNY FAS coaches. These coaches are also working at weekly campus office hours and one-off events, supporting their students. We also have 40 full-time CUNY college and career advising fellows and 25 part-time advisors, supporting FAFSA completion and helping with the CUNY application. They serve about 65 New York City public schools with comprehensive year-round support. We are grateful to Governor Hokel for including part-time students and non-degree programs in TAP. This change and others are big wins for higher education equity that are making a difference in the lives of all our students. As you are aware, our university supporters have stepped up in a major way during the season of giving. On CUNY Tuesday, we raised more than 4.1 million for nearly 4,700 donations to our colleges and programs, a new record, that's six years of growth. This is an 11% increase over last year and more than 30% over 2022. And there is still time to donate at cunytuesday.org. And in fact, since CUNY Tuesday, we have received an additional 500 donations totaling $600,000. Thanks to everybody who's given, and you still have time to continue to give some more. I also want to share two notable grants CUNY colleges received this fall. Last month, we announced that Lehman College was awarded a five-year grant of $8.4 million from the U.S. Department of Education to train multilingual teachers for high-need schools in the Bronx, where more than 59% of the residents speak a language other than English at home. Congrats to the folks at Lehman. And earlier this fall, we also received $5.8 million for the New York State Education Department on behalf of its Office of Adult Career and Continuing Educational Services. That award, which was given to LaGuardia Community College for providing pre-employment transition services to students with disabilities over the next three years, is the largest presented to a single CUNY college in support with students with disabilities. So, congrats to our colleagues at LaGuardia. I'm going to do my speed round of great news and shout-outs. Huge CUNY congrats to Hunter College class of 2023 graduate Emily Springer for being only the 10th student in CUNY's history to receive, to win a Marshall Scholarship. Emily, who was a DJ for Hunter College Radio, received her BA in African, Puerto Rican, and Latino Studies, the department where I used to teach when I came to CUNY, and graduated summa cum laude and was the salutatorian. One of only 36 Marshall winners from across the U.S. for 2025, she plans to explore the evolution of jazz in the U.K. by focusing on cultural studies and audio journalism at the University of London. I also want to congratulate the Graduate Center for launching our Ph.D. and Master's Program in Black Race and Ethnic Studies. These multidisciplinary programs are the first of their kind in the New York metropolitan area. They will prepare students to address pressing issues related to race, ethnicity, and social justice, ultimately helping to foster a more equitable society. And this fall, CUNY TV won three New York Emmy Awards, bringing the total count to 44. The awards recognize Central Presents, Puerto Rican Voices with two Emmys, and the new documentary series, CUNY Laureates, which won its first Emmy. Last month, 10 CUNY schools were named Fulbright Hispanic-serving Institution leaders for this year, the most of any university system in the nation, and the only schools to gain the designation in New York State. Big congrats to First Time Honorees, Bronx Community College, and Borough of Manhattan Community College. The list also includes Baruch, City College, Coliseum Island, the Graduate Center, Hunter, John Jay, Lehman, and Queens College. And earlier this month, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Career Gear Boutique at Bronx Community College. This empowering initiative provides free professional attire to students for interviews and their recruitment events. We want to thank our partner, Agency Collective, for helping us to give our students the confidence they need to shine in a new professional setting. To conclude, most final exams are this week, so as I wrap up, I want to wish our students the best of luck in the finish of this semester, and to everyone here and to all our CUNY community members, I hope you all have a joyful holiday season that includes the chance to share quality time with your loved ones. I will see you in January when we return to CUNY, fully focused on finding new and creative ways to support our students and to continue lifting New York. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Chancellor. We're going to now move to items that require a vote. Item number one, the minutes of the regular board meeting executive session of October 28th, 2024. I'd like to move item number one. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Before we vote, I'd like to publicly acknowledge for the record that during the November 25th, 2024 Committee on Advancement and External Affairs, the chair noted that there was a reference made in the fourth whereas paragraph of the resolution that had been approved on October 9th, 2024 to name the Martin S. Spurgel Initiative in Computational Science at the CUNY Graduate Center, that Martin Spurgel was the chair of Natural Resources at the Graduate Center. However, Professor Spurgel was the chair of Natural Sciences at York College, not the Graduate Center. The committee corrected the minutes, further requested the minutes of the full board meeting from October 28th, 2024 be corrected. The correction has been made to item 5D of the minutes we are approving today. Any official copy or true copy of such resolution will reflect this change. Is there any other discussion on the minutes? All right, let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Item number two, Committee on Governance. I'd like to call on Committee on Governance Chair Ken Sunshine to present the following.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Governance considered the following matters at its meeting on November 25th, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 2A is a resolution to amend the responsibilities of the president and the duties of the department chairperson, and include the roles of the provost and the school division academic dean in the CUNY bylaws and the manual of general policy. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2B is a resolution to amend policy 5.14 of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, Manual of General Policy, Statement of Policy on Multiple Positions. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Item number three, Committee on Audit. I call on Committee on Audit Chair Angelo Vivolo to present and move the following item.
The Board Committee on Audit and Compliance considered the following matters at its meeting on October 30th, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 3A is a resolution to approve the fiscal 2024 audited financial statements. Mr. Chairman, I present 3A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to approve the internal audit plan for fiscal year 2025. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 3B is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I present item 3C as a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2025 internal audit charter. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Item number four, the Committee on Finance and Administration. Let me call on Committee on Finance and Administration Chair Henry Berger to present and move the following items.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Finance and Administration considered the following matters at its meeting on November 25, 2024, which I now present to the board. Item 4A is a resolution to approve the university's fiscal 2026 budget request. The university is requesting that the Board of Trustees approve the university's fiscal year 2026, I'm sorry, budget request, which seeks additional operating funds of $444.3 million and $2.4 billion in new capital funds for fiscal year 2026, and $9.7 billion over a five-year period. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item 4B is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York to enter into an agreement with the New York City Administration for Children's Services for College Now Dual Enrollment Program offerings. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4C is a resolution to authorize a contract between the City University of New York and Technolutions, Inc., for SLATE, an admissions customer relation management solution. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with Technolutions, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $1,920,000 for a five-year period from January 31, 2025 through January 30, 2030. Mr. Chair, I present item 4C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4D is a resolution to authorize a contract between the City University of New York and Kennedy &amp; Company to provide training and maintenance services for SLATE recruitment and admission solution. The university seeks to enter into a contract with Kennedy &amp; Company, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $1,85,500 effective February 1, 2025. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 4D has been approved.
Item 4E is a resolution to authorize a contract with Noodle for online social work program development. The university seeks approval to enter into a university-wide five-year contract with Noodle for online social work program development for an amount not to exceed a total of $8,749,991. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved.
Item 4F is a resolution to authorize a contract with Thomson Reuters Westlaw for the CUNY School of Law Library. The School of Law is seeking approval to enter into a contract with Thomson Reuters to purchase the Westlaw database for a three-year term at a cost not to exceed $600,000. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4G is a resolution to authorize a contract with EBSCO for APA Psych Info, APA Psych Articles, and MLA International Bibliography. The current contract with EBSCO expired on September 30th, 2024, and the university is seeking approval to renew this contract for a period of five years for an amount not to exceed $3,229,992. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4G for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4H is a resolution to authorize a contract with Ithaca for the JSTOR Archive Collections, JSTOR Forum, and Portico Preserve Collections. The university is seeking approval to renew this contract for an amount not to exceed $1,874,790 over a period of four years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4H for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
That was 4I, am I right?
No, 4...
That was H. You're doing I now.
Yep. I lost my place, start. Item 4I is a resolution to authorize a contract with EBSCO for a database package. The subscription is covered by a New York State contract, number PC69912. The current contract with EBSCO expired on September 30, 2024, and the university is seeking approval to renew this contract for a period of five years for an amount not to exceed $3,125,350. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4I for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 4I is approved.
Item 4J is a resolution to authorize a contract with Springer Nature for the Springer Journals package and Nature Journals. The current contract with Springer Nature expires on December 31, 2024, and the university would like to renew this contract for a period of five years for an amount not to exceed Mr. Chairman, I present item 4J for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved.
And item 4K is a resolution to authorize a contract with Wiley for the Wiley Journals package. The university would like to renew this contract for a period of five years for an amount not to exceed $7,158,978. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4K for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4L is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The November/December 2024 Personnel Matters Report is generated from employee data entered into the university's system of record between September 3, 2024, and October 21, 2024, and does not contain appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains 27 ECP actions, including nine regular appointments, seven interim appointments or extensions of interim appointments, four salary increases, four separations, and three reclassifications. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4L for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved.
Items 4M through 4BB are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the executive compensation plan at colleges. I will present them as a group. If anybody wishes to discuss anyone individually, we can pull it out, and I apologize in advance for mispronouncing any names. Item M is Borough of Manhattan Community College, Karen Wilson, Vice President of Institutional Advancement. Item N is Brooklyn College, Philip Napoli, Dean of the School of Humanities and Social Sciences. Items O and P at Bronx Community College are Jessica Seliger as Dean of Workforce Development and Continuing Education, and Manny Lopez as interim Vice President of Student Affairs. Item Q at Gutman Community College, Carla Fuller, interim Dean of Faculty and Academic Affairs. Item R at Ostos Community College, Althea Sterling as interim Vice President of Student Development and Enrollment Management. Items ST and U at Hunter College are Minoj Partisani as interim Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost, Alexis Eggleton as interim Vice President for Institutional Advancement, and Robert Demansky as interim Dean for Institutional Effectiveness. Item V through Z at John Jay Community College are Myrna Fornay as Executive Legal Counsel, Angela Crossman as interim Dean of Faculty, Janice Johnson Diaz as interim Dean of Student Academic Engagement and Retention, Daniel Matos as interim Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Affairs, and Andrew Sidman as interim Dean of Academic Programs. Item AA at City Tech is Hong Lee as interim Dean of the School of Technology and Design. And item BB of your college, Lori Huffner as Vice President of Institutional Effectiveness. Mr. Chairman, I present items 4M through 4BB for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Items 4CC and 4DD are resolutions to appoint interim members of the executive compensation plan at the central office. At the central office, Alicia Alvaro as interim Executive Vice Chancellor and university provost for academic and faculty affairs, and Ann Lopes as interim Vice Chancellor of Academic and Faculty Affairs. Mr. Chairman, I present items 4CC and 4DD for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for those items? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those two items are approved.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, while we're at it, the Board Subcommittee on Investments considered the following matters at its meeting on October 28th, 2024. I will now present to the board. Item 4EE is a resolution to approve minor technical changes for the asset allocation for the City University of New York's investment portfolio. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4EE for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
And item 4FF is a resolution to amend certain investment options in the City University of New York Optional Retirement Program and Tax-Deferred Annuity Plan. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, back to food, my report.
Trustee Burger, thank you so much.
And I'd like to welcome our new executive Vice Chancellor and interim provost to the table with the pleasure of speaking.
Let me call item number five, Committee on Education Policy. Let me call on Committee on Education Policy Chair Jill O'Donnell-Torme to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Education Policy considered the following matters at its meeting on November 26, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 5A1, Policy Item 5A1 is a resolution from the City College of New York to establish a Bachelor of Science in Digital Game Development. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5A1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy Item 5A2 is a resolution to establish a bachelor's program in Data Science and Artificial Intelligence at Lehman College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5A2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 5A3 is a resolution to establish a Master of Science program in Generative AI at the CUNY School of Professional Studies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5A3 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 5B1 is a resolution to amend the governance plan of the CUNY School of Medicine. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5B1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 5C1 is a resolution to award an honorary degree to Lourdes Garcia Navarro at the Creighton Newmark Graduate School of Journalism's commencement. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5C1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 5D1 is a resolution to award Mika Crum with early tenure at Medgar Evers College with an application of bylaw 6.2C2. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5D1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy Item 5E1 is a resolution to appoint Ashida Mukherjee as Professor with immediate tenure at the City College of New York with an application of bylaw 6.2B. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5E1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 5F1 is a resolution to approve the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. The information contained in the Faculty Personnel Matters Report includes appointments and reappointments with tenure and fellowship leaves generated in summary format from faculty data entered by the campuses into CUNY First between August 31st and October 18th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5F1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Policy Item 5F2 is a resolution requesting approval of the Actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard Report. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5F2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Item number six, Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. Let me call on Committee on Advancement and External Affairs Chair Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee for Advancement and External Affairs considered the terms and amount of the following matters at its meeting on November 25, 2024, which I now present to the board. Item 6A is a resolution requesting the approval of the naming of the Leonard Winkler Endowment Scholarship Fund at the College of Staten Island. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
I present item 6B, which is a resolution requesting the naming of the ASPIDAC Capital Management and Wright Foundation Endowed Scholarship for Students Pursuing Degrees in STEM at Eugenio Maria de Ostos Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 6C is a resolution requesting the naming of Ken, Keith, and Kenneth Oringer Endowment Scholarship for Security Studies Fund at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
I present item 6D, which is a resolution requesting the naming of the Professor Joseph D. Centora Natatorium at Queensborough Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 6D is approved.
Thank you, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee. Item number seven, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Let me call on Committee on Facilities Planning and Management Chair Brian Overfelt to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee of Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters at its meeting on November 25, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 7B, Item 7B is a resolution to authorize the acquisition of condominium units at 375 West 207th Street, New York, New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 7B for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second for that item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Item number eight is a resolution of appreciation for Wendy Hensel. May I have a second for this? I'd like to move that. Do I have a second? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. The Chancellor has asked the board to consider three additional resolutions. I will ask the Secretary to read the resolutions for the record, and we will first vote to add the item, and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail.
Item number nine is a resolution to authorize a contract between the City University of New York and the Constructive Dialogue Institute to provide dialogue facilitation training. The resolution is as follows. Whereas the City University of New York, the university is committed to its 2030 strategic roadmap goal of strengthening a university-wide ethic of care that prioritizes the well-being of students, faculty, and staff, embraces diversity, and engenders a true sense of belonging. Whereas global events around the world have had a polarizing effect on the cultural and political landscape in the United States, and have introduced new challenges for higher educational institutions in sustaining inclusive learning environments that foster meaningful dialogue across differences. And whereas the university seeks to build internal capacity for dialoguing, comprehensively addresses divisive issues across its 25 campuses. And whereas the university issued a request for proposals, the RFP, in September 2024 to identify a partner to implement comprehensive dialogue facilitation training and campus climate improvement strategies. And whereas the RFP Evaluation Committee selected the Constructive Dialogue Institute, the CDI, they contained in the RFP as the most responsible and responsive offerer after public advertisement and timely submission of sealed proposals pursuant to law and university regulations. And whereas, CDI will provide a comprehensive approach including leadership training, dialogue facilitation, certification, campus asset mapping, and strategic infrastructure development. And whereas, the proposed contract term will be for one year with the option to renew for an additional four one-year terms commencing on the date of approval or the Office of the Attorney General of New York State and the New York State Office of the Controller, as applicable. And whereas, the university seeks to establish a contract with the Constructive Dialogue Institute in the total amount of $865,591 for a one-year period from February 1, 2025 through January 31, 2026. And whereas, the total amount of funds the university seeks to expend under a contract in any $3,675,381. And whereas, the university will use anti-hate funding provided by the New York City Council to combat religious and ethnic discrimination to support this contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York directs the General Counsel, or his or her designee, and each of them hereby execute, seal, and deliver a contract with the Constructive Dialogue Institute in an amount not to exceed $3,675,381,000. And such contracts shall not exceed for five years for services relating to dialogue facilitation training and campus climate improvement services, together with any and all agreements, documents, and other instruments related thereto, and to take any and all such other actions as such officer so acting may deem necessary or appropriate, and that such execution by such duly authorized officer of the university shall be conclusive evidence of his or her authority to perform, sorry, to perform all such acts and to execute and deliver all such documents and instruments on behalf of the university. And be it further resolved that any subsequent material changes to the terms and conditions of the aforementioned contract shall be submitted to the Board of Trustees for consideration approval. The explanation, the Constructive Dialogue Institute has demonstrated expertise in transforming college and university campuses into inclusive learning environments, currently partnering with 95 colleges and universities and reaching more than 118,000 learners. CDI has a proven track record of implementing dialogue initiatives, including a successful partnership with the State Council of Higher Education for Virginia that led to statistically significant reductions in polarization and increases in student intellectual humility. CDI will work with the university to build dialogue facilitation capacity across all 25 campuses. The project aims to equip key stakeholders with skills to facilitate meaningful conversations, reduce polarization, and create more inclusive learning environments with specific activities, including: one, a dedicated dialogue strategy consultant to coordinate efforts across the system; two, individualized campus asset mapping; three, Leadership Institute for Campus Presidents and Cabinet Members; four, dialogue facilitation training for faculty, staff, and students; five, perspectives blended learning program implementation. That's it.
I'd like to make a motion to add item number nine to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item nine has been added to our agenda. I would like to move item number nine. May I have a second? Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item number nine has been approved.
Item number 10 is a resolution to accept a gift from the Leonard and Sophie Davis Fund for the benefit of the Sophie Davis School for Biomedical Education at the City College of New York. Whereas Leonard and Sophie Davis, the Leonard and Sophie Davis Foundation, Inc., the foundation, and the Leonard and Sophie Davis Fund, the grantor, have a long history of supporting education of students from historically underserved and underrepresented populations by entering into various gift agreements dating from 1962 through the bequests by Leonard and Sophie Davis in the early 2000s, the bequests, and specifically including a pledge agreement dated June 18, 1999, the 1999 Agreement, among the foundation, the City University of New York, the university, and the Sophie Davis School for Biomedical Education, school. And whereas, with such funding, including the bequests and the 1999 Agreement, the school is initially operated by the university as a five-year course of study, but recognizing the establishment of the CUNY School of Medicine, CSOM, it was converted to a three-year course of study. And whereas, the grantor is a successor in interest to the foundation. And whereas, by virtue of gifts made pursuant to the bequests and the 1999 Agreement, an endowment fund, the endowment, was created at the university for the purpose of funding certain scholarships to students enrolled in the school during certain years of their matriculation at the school and their subsequent matriculation at an associated medical school. And whereas, the current value of the endowment is approximately $9 million. And whereas, pursuant to a gift agreement dated November 26, 2024, the gift agreement, grantor has agreed to make a donation to the university in the amount of $1 million, the gift, to be added to the endowment and used to fund certain scholarships and fellowships to provide students with faster entry into and movement through medical school, and to encourage and motivate students from historically underserved and underrepresented populations to enter medical careers so as to provide urban undeserved areas with more devoted physicians, particularly primary care physicians, and other health professionals. And whereas, pursuant to the gift agreement, such scholarships with two awards in each category each year shall be referred to as: A, the Leonard and Sophie Davis Scholarships; B, the Chancellor's Scholarships; C, the Robert Marshak Scholarships; D, the Stanford A. Roman Junior Scholarships; and E, the Rebecca Lee Crumpler Scholarships. And whereas, pursuant to the gift agreement, the amount to be appropriated for expenditure from the endowment to fund the fellowships shall be referred to as the Davis Family Community-Based Research Fund to help underwrite a research program that will provide financial support and intensive mentoring to help eligible medical students participating in the program to develop a research project on community-based health or primary care with a focus on marginalized, vulnerable, or underserved populations. And whereas, pursuant to the gift agreement, the recipients of the fellowships from the Davis Family Community-Based Research Fund shall be referred to as Davis Family Scholars. And whereas, pursuant to the gift agreement, students who graduate from CSOM and who completed the Health Equity and Social Justice Scholar Program, also referred to as the Davis Family Fellowship, shall receive a Davis Family Fellow notation on their CSOM diplomas and receive a certificate of special recognition at graduation. And whereas, authorized by the gift agreement, the university desires to immediately transfer the gift and the full endowment to the Foundation for the City College of New York, the CCF. And whereas, the funds transferred to the CCF shall be administered and invested by CCF in full compliance with the gift agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York on behalf of the Sophie Davis School for Biomedical Education accepts the gift of $1 million from the Leonard and Sophie Davis Fund for the purposes as set forth in the gift agreement. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the naming of: A, the Leonard and Sophie Davis Scholarships; B, the Chancellor's Scholarships; C, the Robert E. Marshak Scholarships; D, the Stanford A. Roman Junior Scholarships; and E, the Rebecca Lee Crumpler Scholarships. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the naming of the Davis Family Community-Based Research Fund and the naming of recipients of fellowships from such fund as Davis Family Scholars. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees at City University of New York approves that students who graduate from CSOM and who have completed the Health Equity and Social Justice Scholar Program shall receive a Davis Family Fellow notation on their CSOM diplomas and receive a certificate of special recognition at graduation. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorizes and approves the transfer of the gift and the full endowment from the university to the Foundation for the City College of New York to be administered and invested in full compliance with the gift agreement and university policy. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorizes the General Counsel, or his designee, and that they hereby are, and each of them hereby is, authorize to sign and deliver a gift agreement, the gift transfer agreement, acknowledging, among other things, the terms and conditions of the transfer of the gift and endowment funds to the Foundation for the City College of New York, funds to the Foundation for the City College of New York, together with any and all agreements, documents, and other instruments related thereto, and to take any and all such other actions as such officer so acting may deem necessary or appropriate, and that such signature of the gift transfer agreement by such duly authorized officer of the university shall be conclusive evidence of his or her authority to perform all such acts and to execute and deliver all such agreements, documents, and instruments on behalf of the university. Explanation, this gift adds to the long history of financial support received by the City University of New York from Leonard and Sophie Davis, the Leonard and Sophie Davis Foundation, Inc., and the Leonard and Sophie Davis Fund to assist students from historically underserved and underrepresented populations in entering medical school so as to provide urban underserved areas with dedicated health professionals.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to add item number 10 to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Let's take a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item number 10 has been added. I'd like to move item number 10. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? The one thing I would like to do is to thank the Davis family, and at some point I think it would be great for us to have them in, you know, at one of our board meetings. The commitment over an extended period of years is greatly appreciated and has benefited our students. All, let's move to a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item number 11 is a resolution to approve the 2023-2027 collective bargaining agreement with the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY. Whereas the City University of New York and the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY, or otherwise known as PSC CUNY, are parties to a collective bargaining agreement that expired on February 28, 2023. And whereas the City University of New York and PSC CUNY commenced bargaining for a successor agreement on June 27, 2023, and whereas the City University of New York and PSC CUNY reached a tentative settlement on December 13, 2024, covering 57 months and providing four across-the-board wage increases and certain other supplementary benefits. And whereas the party's tentative settlement is subject to approval by the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York and subsequent ratification by the PSC CUNY membership at a vote scheduled for January 10, 2025, now therefore be it resolved that the collective bargaining agreement between the City University of New York and the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY, for the period March 1, 2023 through November 30, 2027, is hereby approved by the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York pending ratification by the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY, membership, and be it further resolved that the chancellor is hereby authorized to execute the collective bargaining agreement between the City University of New York and the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY. Explanation, the prior collective bargaining agreement between the City University of New York and the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY, expired on February 28, 2023. This resolution approves the successor 2023-2027 collective bargaining agreement negotiated between the parties. The PSC CUNY collective bargaining unit is comprised of approximately 7,247 full-time faculty, 13,647 part-time faculty, 8,620 full-time non-teaching instructional staff, and 4,962 part-time non-teaching instructional staff. The agreement covers a 57-month period and provides four, four wage increases across the board, 3% for 2023 and '24, 3.25% for 2025, and 3.5% for 2026. Adjunct lecturer pay will be increased in 2026, and in 2027, teaching adjuncts will be compensated on a per-course basis. One-time lump-sum payments will be made to full-time instructional staff and prorata to part-time instructional staff. One-time lump-sum payments will also be available for full-time college lab technicians, lectures, and doctoral lectures with CCE, including Economic Opportunity Center employees, assistants to HEOs, full-time CLIP and CUNY START instructors, and graduate assistants A, B, C, and D. Welfare lump-sum contributions will increase in 2024, 2025, and 2027, and paid parental leave will increase from eight to 12 weeks and will include the eligibility for foster care. The parties agreed to a new pilot for post-tenure reassigned time and the continuation of several existing or expired pilot programs, such as multi-year appointments for teaching adjuncts and payment for defined projects through stipends. Also agreed upon are an enhanced research awards program, lecture advancement, and improvements for Hunter College campus school employees, two-year appointments, and improved benefits for CLIP and START instructors, and promotional opportunities and assignment differentials for college lab technicians.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to add item number 11 to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
We'll move to a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item number 11 has been added. I move item number 11. May I have a second for this?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? I would just like to give credit. Chancellor, thank you. COO Batista and staffs for getting for moving this forward. So thank you all so much.
I was going to do the thanks after the, after the vote, but since you did that, I want to echo your thanks to our COO Batista. I mean, I want to also thank James Davis and his executive team at the PSC, who worked very, very hard in getting this deal. We have some folks that were part of the journey for the 18 months that we were negotiating. So I want to thank our senior vice chancellor, Dorian Gloria, for her leadership, part of her team. Alex Olson was really a key member of that team, too. Carmelo Batista, on the fiscal side, Joseph Invidal, I want to thank her for the hard work. And like any good deal, we needed a couple of closers to come from the bullpen towards the end. So I want to thank our CFO, who, with his team and Kathy Avatar, cranked a whole number of, a set of numbers in the last month, and Alicia Alvaro, the OAAT team, for their great support. And obviously, we wouldn't do anything without the lawyers in the room, so thank you to the, and his team without doing that. But it was a real team effort, and I think we have a deal to be really proud of.
All right. Any other comments? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved. There being no further business, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And seconded? Thank you. We are adjourned.